Welcome everyone to the October Brunsford County Board of Education Meeting. And it's going to be one of the joyous nights. Glad everybody's here. We're going to start out with the invocation by Ms. Milligan is going to do the invocation. And then we're going to have the South Brunswick High School JROTC led by Cadet 1st Lieutenant David Digley to present the colors and also lead us in the pledge. So would everybody please stand.
Would you bow with me please? Most gracious Father in heaven, we come before you tonight and give you thanks for the opportunity to be here, for the opportunity to discuss and consider the things that will make our school system a better place for students, teachers, employees, and for our communities as a whole. We ask Lord that you give us the wisdom and the courage to do what we know and believe to be the best for that purpose. And a special ask us tonight, Lord, that you look out for all the ones who have been touched by this tragedy in Los Angeles. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Color guard, left and right. Eric, colors. Forward, march. Left turn, march. Color guard, halt. Present, arms.
Please beside me the Pledge of the Leaders. I pledge the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Post the colors. Order, arms. March on, march. Left turn, march. Forward, march.
We have a number of awards to get out to employees tonight, so at this time I will turn it over to the conference.
And they always pick the whole thing when I'm saying your seat is. Tonight we celebrate employee health excellence and there's a lot of you here. We have eighteen hundred plus employees that are touring the field. And you're the ones that shine out at your school, your location, in this terrific Manhattan. To announce this year's winner of the 2017 Principal of the Year, please welcome our 2016 winner, Ms. Calabana.
Good evening, everyone. It is, I am very excited and honored to welcome everyone with a special celebration of all of our outstanding educators in Brunswick County. And I am very pleased and privileged to have the privilege of introducing the 2017-18 Principal of the Year. But before I do, I'd like to share some special characteristics of this person. This 2017-18 Principal of the Year is an outstanding leader. She puts the needs of others before herself. She is also a fair and reasonable problem solver. She is able to create the environment around her of a culture of people who want to make a difference in the lives of children. And the part that I like about her the best is she is extremely creative. As you know, as an educator, we wear many hats. In a day, we can be a mediator, a manager, a doctor, a counselor, a detective, an editor. We wear many, many hats as an educator. But not only can this person wear all those hats very well, she can also crochet each and every one of them with expertise. So I would like to introduce to you Ms. Lee.
Make you have to practice my name for a long time now. One other thing that I do not like is, oh my gosh. And I don't get emotional, folks. The three men over there from that door are why I'm standing right here, especially the one on the right, because it was a lot of work getting this girl here. We never thought it. But my son and my brother, who's really sick this summer, I just appreciate it. And I will do my best to represent all of you. And I thank you very much.
See, we're going to have to play with the microphone a little bit tonight.
Keep all mic in front.
The Instructional Support Staff played a tremendous role in our schools. This year, we have three outstanding finalists in this category. Will you please stand to be recognized when I call your name? Angelique Meyer, Behavior Specialist. Lindsay Evans, Instructional Technology Facilitator. Tina Child, Assistant Principal at Bolivia Elementary. Thank you so much. This is all in our meeting room. And the 2017 Instructional Support Employee of the Year is Lindsay Evans. Please come forward.
Thank you, guys. Really, really excited and I really appreciate being nominated and such. I'll do my best to work with all the teachers even more this year. It'll be great.
Our next recognition category is Administration Support Staff of the Year. Will you please stand when your names are called? Laura Catellus. She's the Schoolie Treasurer, Bellville. Alicia Hyden. Alicia was the Secretary of Political When she was nominated, she is now Senior Brood of the Middle. And Lacy Barbe was a Benefits Coordinator for Lincoln Lisa. Congratulations to this year's winner, Lacy Barbe.
I just want to say thank you very much. And I was in a class of ladies that were just phenomenal. Thank you.
Our next recognition category is Operations Support Staff of the Year. Will you please stand where your name is called? Joanne Keck, Custodial Services. Cory Eckert, Capital Projects. And Tina Williams, Head Custodian at Bolivia Elementary. Congratulations to this year's winner, Joanne Keck.
For those of you who know me, I never shut my mouth, but stand up here, Steve. A little bit scared of that. Thank you.
Our next recognition category are our wonderful instructional assistants who support students and our teachers with our, we have a hard time. Representative Iler is here. And Representative Iler, appreciate what you've done to help us keep the students here too. Will you please stand when your names are called? Deborah Watson, Bellville. Kenny K from Bolivia. Sharon Dudley, Brunswick County. Torey Scott, Cedar Road, Delaware. Terry Carter, Jesse May, Monroe. Shannon McDonald, Shannon McDonald, Lincoln, Delaware. Maya Lawrence, Lincoln Elementary. Kimberly Laddell, North Brunswick Hospital. Tremaine Johnson, Charlotte, Delaware. Kathleen Jenkins, South Brunswick. Kim Blood, South Brunswick Hospital. Callie Carman, Southwood Elementary. Cynthia Reeves, Supply Elementary. Lauren Bridges, Town Creek Elementary. Jackie Hardy, Union Elementary. Hugh Bell, Virginia Williamson. Tina Simmons, Wacoma. Melanie Cox, West Brunswick Hospital. Congratulations to all of you. We really need the services in which you can help the kids and how you can help the teachers, all of your players. Congratulations to this year's winner, Cleveland Middle School, Shannon Cox.
Our next recognition category are our Rookies of the Year. These were first-year teachers last school year. Will you please, please stand where your names are called? Amber Cullen, Bellville.
Bill King, Lincoln.
Allison Burrows, DCA. Emily Berger, Jesse Mae Monroe. Ricky Acosta, Leland Middle. Elise Debrices, Lincoln Elementary. Sarah Colorado, North Brunswick High. Justin Crump, South Brunswick Middle. Justin Bradley, South Brunswick High School. Nicole McDowell, Supply Elementary. Shonda Robbins, Town Creek Elementary. Kristen Leesman, Union Elementary. Barbara Cago, Wacoma. And Savannah Yost at West Brunswick High. And congratulations goes to our Rookie of the Year from Leland Middle School, Ricky Acosta, please come forward.
Thank you so much, Chris. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, it's now my pleasure to introduce the Teachers of the Year of our nineteen schools. Please stand when your names are called. Chris Shepard, Brooklyn. Kristen Slaw, Leland. Jessica Black, DCA. Arjuna D, Cedar Road, Delaware. Lori Henry, Pittsburgh, Lawrence, Delaware. Stephanie Russell, Jesse Mae Monroe. Carolyn Phillips, Leland, Delaware. Kenny Jenkins, Lincoln Elementary. Jennifer Costin, North Brunswick. Holly Gordon, Charlotte, Delaware. Priscilla King, South Brunswick. Sam Jennings, South Brunswick High. Melissa Wayless, Townport Elementary. Debbie West, Supply Elementary. Breann Hastings, Town Creek Elementary. Tara Cumey, Union Elementary. Cindy Evans, Virginia Williamson. Leslie Stan, I don't like that name. Paul Wacoma. Marion Gore, West Brunswick Hospital. All right, now to introduce our finalists and announce the 2017 Brunswick County Teacher of the Year. My pleasure to take you to the 2016 Brunswick County Teacher of the Year, Michelle Sharpe.
Thank you. It's been an honor, first of all, to serve Brunswick County Schools this year as your Teacher of the Year. It's truly been a year of learning and growing for me as a teacher and as a teacher leader. I've had the honor to represent amazing central office staff, board members, and other Brunswick County teachers. Each person that I have come in contact with this year, I have learned something from, and I'm making great additions. I remember standing here last year receiving this award and there's really no way to prepare someone for the year that you have ahead of you as Brunswick County Schools Teacher of the Year. I certainly had no idea what my year would look like or could I imagine everything that's been accomplished. As Toy, I got to experience the passing of the new bond proposal that will change our school system for the better. I also saw the election of two new board members. I was allowed to represent the teacher's voice at school board meetings each month. And after the board asked me for some direct feedback from teachers, the survey was derived and shared with all the Brunswick County Schools teachers. This information, along with the help from an awesome team, was presented to the board. And from the information presented, we had conversations that led to Teacher Academy. One of the highlights of my year was seeing that awesome event happen this past July. I'm so honored to have been part of Teacher Academy and the incredible planning and collaborating and learning that it provided for our teachers of Brunswick County. I want to thank the board for allowing me to come to meetings every month and truly be the teacher's voice for all the teachers in Brunswick County. Brunswick County teachers know that you are listening and appreciate all that you do. So let me introduce the finalists. Under your hand. The toy should truly be the voice for all the teachers of Brunswick County. And this year during the selection process, we had a very difficult task of determining a winner out of all the many well-qualified and well-deserving candidates. I enjoyed the selection process because it gives you just a glimpse of all the amazing teachers that we have in Brunswick County. Our three teacher finalists are, and if we'll have everyone else sit, then we can have them stand. We have Tara Cumey from Union Elementary School. We have Carolyn Phillips from Leland, North Brunswick. And we have Sam Jennings from South Brunswick High. All these finalists are stellar candidates and each possess their own unique qualities that make them stand out as amazing teacher leaders in Brunswick County Schools. One teacher however really exhibited the heart of Brunswick County School. This person showed a drive for leadership and success, but also a tender side that connects teachers with students. I know this individual will do an amazing job representing Brunswick County School as the 2017-18 Teacher of the Year. This year's 2017-18 Teacher of the Year of Brunswick County Schools is Carolyn Phillips.
Wow, what an amazing honor. I just have to say thank you to the board for spending time with me. I really enjoyed the conversation that we had when I interviewed. I will work so hard for you teachers this year, I promise. I will do my best, I will continue with what Michelle has been working on, and will represent Brunswick County the best way possible. So thank you. Thank you, Leland. Oh my goodness, Leland, pretty.
Okay. Just before I break, I need all the county winners, would you like to go to the front?
All the county winners at the front?
All the county winners, if you would, stand right up here at the front with us and the board would like to take a photo of the county.
All county winners. All down. All down. All county winners. You can bring your certificate and your badge. There you go. Come on down. Teacher of the Year finalists, come on down. Carolyn, come on down. Rookie of the Year, come on down. That's right. That's right. All right, we need a nice picture of us. This is what photos are ready.
No, I don't care.
Hi, hi, hi. Ah, perfect. Big smile. Big smile.
At this point in the agenda, we're at public address and we're honored tonight to have Mr. Frank Iler, our representative here. And he has a public address and he considers important for school education in the public area.
Thank you very much. I want you to let my board talk to you in private. Can you hear me? I want you to let my board talk to me in private. As most of you know, I was married to a high school business teacher for many years. And I also was able to visit all the schools in 2013-14. And Jessica and the staff and I ended up going to all the schools and sitting classroom. And I'm going back to school this year, at least to half of those schools, because I needed to get a refresh report. And in fact, I had to go back to kindergarten one year because I'm a student of kindergarten on death. But all jokes aside, it's been a real honor to participate in the Teacher of the Year selections the last ten years. And somebody as middle school teacher, keep jumping out as a winner. And to acknowledge who we've got to praise teachers, and I've heard of several. And we actually seriously discussed having three winners. And I said, well, the other two, you'd like to be like assistant winners or something to help out with the board, the teachers. So I've been preparing comments, speaking hard, and I just wanted to get rid of all the work. Actually, I'm taking my car and I've got ten minutes and go to Raleigh early morning. Schedule tomorrow and a short session, I hope for three days is going to be there. And this is an honor representing Brunswick County in the House of Representatives and in law, and it's an honor to talk about our education. In my experience in those schools, by the way, anybody can tell you, helps me tell you what I saw. If somebody would say something in a committee, working on legislation, they'll say something and I say, wait, that's not what I saw, but this is what I saw. So it really is helpful and I appreciate all the teachers I've been observing, and good to know, and principals. And I said, it's time to go back, some changes going on, I better go back and refresh. So thank you for inviting me and gracious and all the ones. It was a tough choice, but you know, the girl's there. So thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is President Kate, Colonel Dobbs. Teacher Academy. Point the other. This year, we had first of anything in the state, and that was Teacher Academy where we had over five and a half teachers come together for classroom development and then for planning. Never been done as a unit or an LEA or a school system. An opportunity for teachers to work together. And I heard it was essentially the best club that will stand out for me. And it emphasizes what took place in the Teacher Academy was a group of music teachers. And they're sitting together and one music teacher makes a comment and says, this is the first time in twenty-three years that I've had a chance to sit down with my fellow music teachers from across the county and play. Well, you know, it doesn't happen without a lot of different work being made. And it takes a lot for those individuals to pull it off. But what we have now is a short video, just to finish, recap what took place at the Teacher Academy.
a good school system here, we have good teachers, and that we continue to draw good teachers to this area.
It makes a lot of sense that we provide the classroom teacher with the resources, and most importantly, I think, the time to become the best teacher they can be.
I've been really excited about Teacher Academy all summer. I think it's been a wonderful opportunity for teachers in the county to get together and to really focus on student learning and talking about what we can do to increase student achievement.
We had a vision of what we felt like Brunswick County school teachers would enjoy, would need, would be able to work as a team basically for the betterment of our students. And that was how we presented it when we spoke with the board, because ultimately that was who will benefit from this is our students.
The thing I was most excited about was getting a chance to sit across from a table with my other county colleagues that I don't normally get to sit and bounce ideas off of, and really come up with strong, intentional, effective lesson plans.
I think it's really great. And I think Brunswick County's definitely on the right track, and other counties probably will look at it and follow their lead, because everyone who's here is here for a reason. And there's people that you meet that are brand-new to this particular grade level, and so they don't know what to do. So, it's good to be able to share, and teachers are good about sharing with one another.
I feel that it really shows that Brunswick County values the teachers as professionals. It's an amazing opportunity to be able to work together with others and collaborate, and just really, I mean, it's for the students, and we are trying to get what is best for the students across the county.
I feel like Brunswick County, they want us to be better at what we do, so they always give us opportunities to be a better teacher. So, I enjoy it, and I'm thankful that they give us these opportunities.
I came in yesterday and looked at the small groups that were working together, and I've been in classrooms, and we had a 27-year veteran teacher next to a first-year teacher, and they're sharing their best ideas. And that first-year teacher was going the first day saying, "I know what I'm doing." And so, that is just so exciting.
As the community comes together, the community is investing in leaders. We believe that everybody wins when a leader gets better. And teachers are leaders. There's got to be strong community support for Teacher Academy.
Our teachers are genuinely appreciated and supported by our community, and there was no better evidence of this than to experience the outpouring of community support and volunteers that came out specifically to plan events and to secure community sponsorships to make this week very special for our teachers.
We are very grateful for all the people who have supported us and who have allowed us this opportunity. And so, just being able to tweet out our thanks and to show kind of what we're doing, hopefully will help people to see the need for things like this in our county and maybe other counties.
The Brunswick County Chamber of Commerce was really thrilled to be asked by Jessica Swinski to be a part of the Teacher Academy. To have a program, number one, that is the first in the state of North Carolina, I think is something that we should be extremely proud about. It shows how progressive we are and that we're serious about making these teachers have everything that they need to be successful in the classroom to make their students have a very successful year. It's going to be a major positive influence and a positive effect on our students this year, so we're very proud.
I think that really we have to celebrate the importance of the teacher. We all know that the key to a child's success in the classroom is having an excellent teacher. A great teacher in every classroom makes us a stronger school system.
I think Mr. Thompson summed it all up in his statement, that we need to celebrate the importance of our teacher. And that's part of what this was about, to celebrate and also giving the teachers the opportunity to do some things that they really wanted to do. You know, you can't pull one of these off without a group of people that are willing to help you, volunteers, community members. Some of them were in the teaching profession, most of them weren't. So, I have a certificate for those individuals that are part of the charity that helped me in this all. Port City Community Church, Mr. Brown, we're already in line.
Father has the lolly ball match.
That's the lolly ball match, okay.
She's doing the dad thing tonight.
Ellen Davis, one of my allies. Crystal Damm, one of the town crew brothers. A person who's very important to me, Jill. She's in the house at 7:00 in the morning, she'll say, "Have you forgotten?" She doesn't do it wrong, which women does. Mr. John Nergen Thompson, Office of Defense. Port City Community Church, Mr. Brown, we're already in line. Ellen Davis, one of my allies. A person who's very important to me, Jill. She's in the house at 7:00 in the morning, she'll say, "Have you forgotten?" She doesn't do it wrong, which women does. Mr. John Nergen Thompson, Office of Defense. Shannon Beer, I wonder where she comes from. Shannon's home, she's a lady. The chamber was very helpful across the whole five things. Sharon Emerald Davis, Sharon and I have been working and assisting you around now, off and on, for two years. Susan's our protective director for operations, and when there was a little glitch, a big glitch, Sue was there to help. Tinesha Rodger, I know Tinesha's not here tonight, but we will get this to her. Tinesha's one of those employees that drives out of duty, and she's very, very, very supportive of our system, does a fantastic job. Mike Forte, I haven't seen Mike much on our accounting division, and he's one of the accounting commissioners that we're, that's our, big heart for education. Tori Buller. She can hear her son, she was here. Look at this, Tori. She was the one at the table, she was the one who helped me out too. Elise Bailey, and I have not seen Elise here tonight. Elise is usually there when we do, gives us some good feedback as to what we do and how we improve, and we're happy with Elise's business. Crystal Kane. The girl in the middle is always in the middle.
That's right. That's the best place to be.
I'm going to remind you. I almost had my hands, I thought they were in the back of the car, and I had the rest out of the car. The hands are on my desk, waiting. Deanne Meadows and Deanne's at a conference today. Dr. Terry Otis. You know, there were a lot of leaders in this group that I'm just giving to you, showing appreciation. You know, there always has those people that come out and really push, and there were several, two or three, that really, really made a big difference and helped us and set it up, did the network, and made it so that Teacher Academy could actually function, set up P to P, sign rooms, sign where you and I would get it. And at this time, all these three people are coming in. Kathy Oliver, Paige Corso, and then that one. We'll move on with the meeting agenda. This very committee came together last week, and they were looking at how we could go the next step. And the next step is going to be, we're going to bring it back to the cabinet and talk, and talk about what we can do and prove where the next steps happen to be. Then, we're going to do a presentation to the board at a curriculum meeting so that they get a better understanding of where we would like to go if we can, and the money's available. And then, the follow-on step up there will be through the budget cycle. And I can assure you that the board is working on that already, but you know, a lot of things depend on budgets and dollars. Anyway, this was one tricky opportunity to provide here. Thanks all of you who met with the board. We'll go call a board meeting back to order. We're at the point of approving the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda tonight?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. There's a motion by Mr. Miller to approve the agenda, seconded by Mr. Thompson, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. The next item is approval of amendments of September 19, the regular meeting. Are there any corrections needed for the amendments of September 19?
Mr. Chairman, I have a correction. I'd like to call to your teaching. On page one of the minutes, September 19, when I made the motion regarding the motor pool, I unintentionally stated carpool. I would like that to be changed to motor pool. And also, on page three, on item six, that should be motor pool as well.
Okay. So, with those two corrections, the board will, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve with changes.
Okay, Mr. Miller makes a motion to approve with the two changes. Can you have a second? I'll second. Mr. Thompson seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. There are no consent items tonight. Action items, Miss Cahill?
Do I stand here? I'll speak up?
I'm the pole.
We have a few budget amendments, and the first one is state number two. State number two. The first item is to transfer some funds between 15 months of employment to cover up salaries. The next one, on state number two, the next item of note, behavioral support as well as art resource officers. Those are state allotments that we receive annually, and they just come back, come this late. The transportation allotment, $197,000, is a special allotment that we received, a recurring allotment from the state to increase bus driver pay. Local number two. These are local carryovers from last year. The E-rate reimbursements, we carry that over from year to year. Textbook, local, we carry that over from year to year. And Special Projects Fund, this is known as the Sheriff's Fund, is carried over as Child nutrition, number one. Mr. Porcher has asked to appropriate $100,000 from fund balance to purchase additional equipment for school cafeterias. And the last one, well, maybe not the last one, special revenue, number two. This is a reduction in the carryover amount for Medicaid services. We have a reserve, as the money comes, as we request reimbursement for Medicaid, as some of those, a certain percentage of that money that comes in, we put into a reserve because what's occurred in years past is that sometimes they come back a couple of years later and say, "Well, you really shouldn't have applied for this," even though at the time they said that was reimbursable. So, we keep that money in reserve in case if they ask for it back, and they did. And then, capital, number two. This is, no, I'm sorry, that's just from last night, sorry. That concludes the budget amendments for the month of October.
Freya, I have just one question. The child nutrition, one?
Yes.
The $100,000, is this piece of equipment run down or something?
No, it's various equipment. They have a healthy fund balance, and rather than using our capital outlay funds to buy their equipment, they're purchasing their own with their own fund balance.
The equipment, they thought this had to still go after one, just make money, just go faster. Some of this kitchen equipment.
It's all non-budgeted, right? All non-budgeted, right?
At the, there's, the fund balance in child nutrition was above a recommended amount, so our auditor's office, that we needed to, if we were holding, holding purchases, equipment needs. we needed to spend.
But we need each of these items. There is not an exercise in spending the money. It almost sounded like that's what you meant, but I understood you didn't.
Three oven, there's three ovens, they're a high-efficiency count of ovens that cook food faster and don't use as much energy, so that's definitely going in the right direction.
Any other questions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I've made the motion to approve the budget amendments, as we said about Miss Cahill.
Mr. Thompson makes the motion to approve. I'll second.
I second.
Ms. Miller can second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Colonel Tubbs, announcements?
Yes, sir. Ms. Skaggs, if you would stand up, please, ma'am. Tomorrow, at 1:00, we're having a program to honor our early college high school. They have won the 2017 National Blue Ribbon Award. They are one of six. They are one of six schools in North Carolina to win this award. There are only two high schools out of the six, and this is one. We are very proud of you, teachers. It's just magnificent that it keeps growing and doing, and kids come out, and it's fantastic. And you make us proud, and your kids make us proud.
Thank you for all the support. You do not have without the support of this state. You do not do without the support of this state.
If you can, 1:00 tomorrow at Odell Williams', and we're going to have Blue Cupcake tack boards.
Everybody come tell them.
You know, if you've never been involved in that, that process is really quite a labor. And I know Ms. Skaggs has told me she had five different writers and editors to make this, to do the presentation and put in the documents necessary to become a Blue Ribbon school. So, we know you worked a lot last year to do that, so congratulations again.
That's all I have. Okay, at this point, we all, the chair will entertain a motion to go to closed session. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to enter closed session for Colonel Tubbs to look, Thompson to close his hands back. Mr. Thompson makes the motion. Can we have a second?
I second.
We have two seconds, and we're good. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.